I know, I know. Is this really in that three minutes?
Well, five minutes for public.
Oh, that's right. Now we are everywhere. All right, we have one more minute. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brevard City Council Regular Meeting of February 5th. Before we start, I would just like to ask everyone to please mute your cell phones. And I just want to issue a warm welcome to those that have joined us in person here at City Hall, as well as everybody that is watching our live broadcast. And I am very pleased today... Oh, whoop, I gotta do the introductions. Thank you, Denise. I'm about to rush right into things without introducing folks. Anyways, let me introduce everybody that is sitting up here. On my far right, we have our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to Mac, we have city councilman Lauren Wise. Next to Lauren, we have city councilwoman Pamela Holder. Next to Pamela, we've got city councilman Mac Morrow. I am Mayor Maureen Kopeloff. On my left is our city clerk, Denise Hodston. Next to Denise is our mayor pro tem and councilman Gary Daniel. We usually have councilman Aaron Baker sitting in that seat, and he will be joining us momentarily, so he will be showing up. And on my very far left is our city manager, Wilson Hooper. Okay, now, I am very pleased that we tonight have Pastor Ken Albright from the Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd. And Pastor Ken is going to give our invocation.
Good evening. I wanted to just share a passage that kind of inspired me in the invocation that I give tonight, and that's in Exodus, Chapter 17. And in that passage, the Amalekites are fighting with the Israelites. And Moses directs Joshua to get the people together and to do battle when they are being attacked. And they discover that as long as Moses has his arms up in the air, that Israel's victorious. But the minute they go down, they are not, and the Amalekites start winning. And so, so they put a rock and they prop it up under Moses. And then Aaron lifts up one arm, stands on one side, and Hur on the other, and they hold Moses' arms in the air, all the way until sunset. And the Israelites prevailed over the Amalekites. And it's been important to me in my ministry to recognize who those people are who prop my arms up. Those people who support me when I grow weary and to make sure that our efforts prevail. And so just keep that in mind as I offer my prayer of invocation this evening. Let us pray. Lord God, I lift up to you Maureen, Gary, Aaron, Pamela, Mac, and Lauren, Denise, and Wilson. In their efforts to guide and give strong leadership through and in partnership with the Brevard City Council, give them strength in their leading. Confirm their sense of call to work on behalf of the whole community. Guard them from resignation to issues that seem too big or complex. Stir up in them a sense of urgency and a commitment to decency. Give them tools to listen effectively to the people they serve and resolve to do the right thing even when it is not convenient or popular. And Lord, give them people to hold up their arms when they grow weary. Just as Moses had Aaron and Hur at his right and left hands to lift up his arms when he grew weak. Give them support, the support that they need through family and friends, through the religious community, and from people they may not have even expected. To help them in their efforts to prosper in a city that desires to do well by all who live here and to do well by those who just come to enjoy and be refreshed by it for a time. I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ken. Can you tell us a little bit about the Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd?
Yeah, I'll just say a few words that I served the Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd, which is at 22 Fisher Road, which is directly across the street from Ingalls. And the congregation has been serving the Brevard and Transylvania community for nearly 75 years. And I just celebrated in the past week my fourth anniversary with them as their pastor. We have two services on Sunday mornings. We have a contemplative service at 8:00 a.m. and a traditional service at 10:30, and both of them offer Holy Communion every Sunday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for supporting us. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, Honored Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum. All members are present.
Councilmembers, you got the draft agenda. Are there any recommended modifications to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, if I can ask to add, unfortunately, one, an additional closed session regarding real estate acquisition.
Okay. All right. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the one modification?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Councilmembers, the minutes of the January 6, 2024, regular meeting was sent out to you. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Now we have the time for public comments. All right, public comments. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on this agenda. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk, which is what the signup sheet is. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Limit comments to three minutes or less and avoid repetition. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. We have one individual who has signed up, and that is Mr. Maurice Jenkins.
My name is Maurice Jenkins. I live at 148 West Pro Bart Street. I'm here about the Pro Bart Street traffic calming. A group of us have been working on this with several people on the council and in the city over the last year. We have also worked with the Public Safety Committee. And we're concerned because of increased speed and increased volume of traffic on Pro Bart, as well as narrowing of the road, increased number of large trucks, which don't always obey the yellow line, and also increased bicycle traffic as we are a bicycle-friendly town. I would like to thank the people from the city who have helped us. Wilson Hooper, city manager, the Brevard city staff, the Public Safety Committee, which is chaired by Aaron Baker now, Mac Morrow, and formerly Maurice Jones, also Mayor Kopeloff, as well as Police Chief.
Tom Jordan.
Tom Jordan, and...
He's just chief.
At least I didn't call him Aaron Burr. And Fire Chief Robert Cooper, and our citizen representative, Kevin Gallo. And I also want to announce and invite anyone who has an interest in traffic on Pro Bart, who has a stakeholder, to come to a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. That's not this Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 12th, at 6:00 p.m. at Mary C. Jenkins Center. And that is an informational, information gathering and survey meeting for people with an interest in this issue of traffic calming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. That is our only public comment that was signed up. All right. At this time, we have a public hearing on the additional proposed rezoning expansion of Downtown Development Overlay District. And our Assistant Planning Director, Aaron Bland, is going to give the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you remember, at the November 6 council meeting, there was a vote to enlarge the Downtown Development Overlay District, which is an overlay zoning district in the heart of downtown that has a build-to line as its primary requirement on top of the typical downtown mixed-use zoning district requirements. During, a little bit of history about how that happened. The planning board reviewed that map amendment, and they actually forwarded you a recommendation that would have enlarged the area to be rezoned. But the city attorney noted that the UDO does not grant the planning board the authority to make a recommendation that enlarges, only a recommendation that reduces a rezoning area. So given that advice, council voted to approve the original expansion area. But in their discussion, expressed interest in the expanded area proposed by the planning board. And so instructed staff to initiate a second map amendment to enlarge it even further. So that is what we're doing right now. We have, let me bring up the map so everyone can see that. You have a map in your packet, and there's a lot of colors going on here. Just to sort of let everyone know, we have the existing, the new extended green hatching, which goes all the way up to west French Broad Street now. And then, planning board's original enlarged recommendation is the extra yellow areas. So Princess or College Plaza to the north, and then the areas between Caldwell and Broad Street going south down to Cardinal Drive-In, but not including Cardinal Drive-In. It stops right before that. Council expressed interest in going on the other side of Broad and Caldwell Streets, one parcel deep. So that's the red hatching. So on the Broad Street side, that's actually all county property, and you actually go all the way to Gaston Street if you go just one parcel deep. But on Caldwell, it's just about halfway through the block to Duckworth. When the planning board discussed this second expansion on December 12, they ultimately made a recommendation that kind of is a little bit of both. It's the blue outline. So they included the Caldwell Street frontage on the opposite side, but not the Broad Street frontage on the opposite side. Reasoning there is because it's all of the county facilities, and it's not parceled out for development like Caldwell Street, and that the library is already built pretty darn close to the sidewalk. So that's their recommendation, again outlined in blue. And of course, they also submit their consistency statement to you in accordance with state statutes. One project that is currently underway, but was not yet underway during the first expansion, is the rewrite of Chapter 5 of our UDO, which is where all our architectural standards reside. And part of the scope of this rewrite is going to include some specific architectural requirements for this overlay district. Right now, the only real requirement is that build-to line or a maximum setback. But this, this project will include some more form-based code-type requirements for this district. So we just want to remind you of that, since that wasn't in place the first time around, and just sort of stress the careful consideration of expanding this district because it's also expanding the area where those new regulations will apply. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or zoom in on the map, or discuss anything more specific.
Thank you, Mr. Bland. Normally, at this point, we would call up everybody that signed up on the public hearing to speak. But nobody actually signed up to speak at the public hearing. We do have one individual who wanted to speak but could not make it here tonight. And he has submitted an official statement via email to city council. So councilmembers, you all have Mr. Doug Harris's public comments in the written email in front of you. And the city clerk is going to make this part of the record of the public hearing. And if anyone is interested in actually, I'm not going to read it word for word, but if you're interested in the comments, that will be part of the public record. And it is that we have some extra copies of the written public hearing comments up here.
Mayor, also, the county manager contacted me late last week and said that after the county commissioners' meeting next Monday, they'll have some comments to submit to you all as well. And I don't know what form those will come in, but when we receive them, we'll distribute them out to the council for your consideration.
Okay, all right. So it looks like we will have several comments. All right. With that, I will just see if council has any questions that they want to ask Mr. Bland. Mr. Baker, any questions?
I did have one question, or really just a request, I guess, for the next meeting. Could we see on this map a, an analysis of which properties that are within that area are, I guess, in compliance currently with the expanded district? And which ones would not be in current compliance? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Or would that be incredibly hard to do?
You mean just the additional areas? Or all of the existing, the new existing?
Yeah, I'm primarily interested in the, in the expanded area.
Okay, the yellow and red areas?
Yeah.
I can do a rough estimate.
Yeah, yeah. That would, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel, any questions?
No, I made my comments at the last meeting, so I'm good.
Mr. Morrow?
Just an interesting comment on this map. Kelly's Way is actually Apple Tree Street. Haven't just gone through there. See what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Ms. Holder, any questions?
At the risk of feeling like I don't know enough to ask the question, I'm gonna ask the question. How will it be zoned, or will it fall in line with what downtown is already looking like? What does that mean?
So this is an overlay district, which is an extra district on top of the typical zoning districts, what we call base district. The base district is not going to change. All this area is downtown mixed-use, except for where the, where the hotel is proposed to go. It has its own district. So that doesn't change. So the uses that are allowed, that sort of stuff, is not changed by this. All this really does is impose what we call setback line, or a build-to line, just sort of the opposite of the setback. Instead of saying you have to build so far away, it says you have to build so close, which is how downtowns are typically built, out close to the sidewalk.
Okay. What's the status with the hotel?
Well, they, they have their own site-specific district. They're called a conditional district. But they are planning on doing this as well, building up close to the sidewalks on Broad Street and Apple Tree.
Thank you. Mr. Wise?
As a, as an architect, I couldn't help myself, and I saw a pretty map, and I had to draw on it. So I gave that to Wilson, and I think he might have forwarded it to you guys. It just was more some thoughts about, not dissimilar to what Doug, who is also an architect, was thinking about, about what our streetscapes look like. So if, I'm sure you'll take a look at that. I don't have any other comments about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bland. We will move on. The public hearing is officially closed. Moving on to our consent and information. The following items are on the consent agenda. One, property tax releases, January of 2024. Two, the quarterly pedestrian bicyclist incident report. Three, the police department annual report. Four, the fire department annual report. Five, the city council Parks, Trails, and Recreation Committee minutes, October 18 of 2023. Six, city council downtown master plan committee minutes, November 8 of 2023. Seven, city council finance, human resources, and citizen appointment committee minutes, November 27 of 2023. Eight, the city council public safety committee minutes, November 27, 2023. And nine, Rosenwald Community Advisory Board minutes of November 28, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to new business. We have one item with two sub-items. The first is the board and committee appointments. And I guess the first one is the Acoustic Trail Advisory Board. Mr. Manager, are you presenting this? Who's?
No, ma'am, we, our staff report is our presentation.
That's it, okay. Then you have the staff report. And do I have a motion? I will do one of these one at a time. Do I have a motion regarding the Acoustic Trail Advisory Board recommendation for the committee appointment?
I move that we accept Madeleine Hanley for the Acoustic Trail Advisory Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments? Mr. Daniel?
Again, as I said in the committee, I feel like Mrs. Hanley has shown a commitment to public service in her efforts to run for city council, and I would like to see her on this board. We had two really good candidates for this position. Well, particularly good, should I say.
A lot of...
Several good candidates. But we had two very good candidates, I thought, and not. So it was a somewhat difficult decision, but that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Baker?
Just a brief question, I think, regarding, because I do think we have a lot of good applicants here. I guess this is a question for the manager. Do we have like a form letter or correspondence that we respond to folks that have applied that aren't chosen? Do they get an official city communication? They do, okay. Yeah, I think, I think I've made similar comments before, but it's always great to see people raise their hand and want to participate in our boards. And just want to make sure we encourage folks to, to apply for other openings that we might have and to stay engaged.
Mr. Wise?
I agree. We had some fantastic candidates. I think seven or eight, I can't remember. So we, we had to kind of parse this one through. But Madeline's a fantastic candidate for the acoustic board. I just moved off that board, sadly. But those shoes have been filled very well.
Ms. Holder?
I did, he said, I'm glad that she is, I know she has a heart for the Acoustic Trail, and I'm glad that she has been the chosen candidate, and I'll certainly congratulate her.
Mr. Morrow?
It's nice to have the finance committee review these. Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. All right, we now have an appointment, actually, I think a reappointment for the Brevard Housing Authority. Do I have a motion?
I move we appoint Jennifer, or reappoint Jennifer Kerr to the Housing, Brevard Housing Authority Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments? Mr. Wise?
No comments. This is a reappointment. She's done an excellent job. I'm glad to see that she wants to keep up the good fight.
Ms. Holder?
No comments.
Mr. Morrow? Mr. Daniel?
I have no comment.
Mr. Baker?
Just a clarifying question. I noticed the five-year term. I, I guess that's because it's, it's not our board, correct?
That's correct, that's the term, yep.
Great.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, that is the end of new business. We are setting a record tonight. We are moving on to remarks. I know, I know, now we're gonna talk for 30 minutes under remarks. I know, I just jinxed it, okay. All right, remarks are future agenda considerations, and we will start with Mr. Wise.
Just a few things. One, I was sad to see we have six more weeks of winter, but it is what it is. This hasn't been the most grueling winter yet, so it's okay. We gotta get one snow, though, right? Is everyone behind me?
No, no.
All right. I think we can...
Public works, no!
I'm gonna make a motion for the snow. And a couple of us were just at this gathering of leaders called Perpetuating a special place about how we feel about Brevard, how it's growing, the sense of community here. And it was a, we had to leave a little bit early because of this. But it is really encouraging to see that there's a lot of people in the community who are interested in trying to find the path forward for not just Brevard, but the county as a whole, and especially how we kind of merge together, the city and the county relationship. So I'm excited. So I'm excited to see how that moves forward, and just want to let you guys know that that's being talked about.
Ms. Holder?
My heart is concerned tonight, for lack of better words, about we've had more persons to either overdose or commit suicide. And I don't know how we move forward in addressing that as a community, as a council, but I want to move forward personally to find out what we can do, and would like to maybe perhaps come to you at a later time with suggestions and ideas as I plow through this emotional feelings of what's going on in our community.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Morrow?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I would like to address to Chief Jordan. I should have asked to pull this from the consent agenda, his report, but I noticed that crime is up very slightly, and that our arrests record, arrests are down by 25%. I don't need an answer right now, but I'm just, I think I probably know the answer of this, but I would like some clarification on that. And also, the other thing I would like is, you know, we just started our new parking enforcement, I believe, and I would, I'd like to see it not, we probably aren't far enough into it to have a report on that, but I'd like to see what the information that we have gathered on that is as well at a later date. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Mr. Baker?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Mr. Attorney?
No comments. Thank you, though.
Madam Clerk?
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, I have two. The first is that, don't get your hopes up. Two weeks from now, our meeting will be a long one. So bring a snack. And then the second thing I wanted to report was, Social District starts on Friday at 11:00 AM. It was in the paper last week, and Becky's going to do some other releases here this week, probably Nicole, too. So just wanted to give everyone a warning that you might see some folks walking around with their cups on Friday afternoon.
All right, I have just a couple of comments. I, too, am really, really pleased to see the large number of people volunteering to be on our committees. You know, we have talked a lot about civic engagement, about participation, about having your voice heard, and this is one of the key ways that you can do that. And so it's a wonderful problem to have more applicants than we have openings, but I encourage people that even if you are not selected to serve on a board, that all of our boards are open. They are open to the public. That means everybody, everybody is welcome to come to those boards. And at those boards, I would say, you know, I go to most of them, and almost none of them don't allow the public to speak. At the end, there's almost always time when public input is accepted by the chairman of that particular committee. So this is just another wonderful way. The schedule for our boards and committees is on our website. They meet, you know, on a consistent basis. But if there are topics that you're interested in, if there are concerns that you have, this is a wonderful way to get them into our system. So even if you're not an official voting member, you can certainly come and hear the conversation and hear what is being worked on. The speeding, the traffic calming on Probarke Street is a wonderful example. That was brought to our safety committee by the public. And now we are moving forward with some ideas. We are actually holding that public hearing to get more public input so that we can really make an informed decision on how to use resources to try and do the traffic calming based on what the community really feels is needed. So again, that was just a wonderful, you know, wonderful that so many people wanted to be on our committees. We have, I'm also very, very happy to announce, and I'm actually sort of surprised that Mr. Baker didn't announce this, that we are now officially a bicycle-friendly city, that we got the designation. We are a bronze-level official bicycle-friendly city. So thank you to the planning department that worked so hard in putting in our application. And of course, this just reflects really the vision that we are going forward with, to try and have that multimodal transportation, to make it more bikeable, to make it more friendly, to get out there, to create that healthy environment. So we are now of one of 479 other cities that are officially bike-friendly cities. So great job, team. Let's see. Yes. And of course, we are continuing to work, and we will continue, and hopefully move from bronze to silver in another couple of years. So we'll just put that little challenge out there to you. Last Friday, we had a wonderful White Squirrel Day, and again, we had probably 60 people from the community come to watch Piska Penny, our official white squirrel ambassador, declare that we are going to have six more weeks of winter. So Piska Penny is always right, that winter might be 60 degrees, but it's six more weeks of winter. So a big thank you to the White Squirrel Institute that put that on. And for those that are not aware, the White Squirrel Institute is a nonprofit that raises money for the rehabilitation of injured animals. It's not just squirrels, not just white squirrels, it's other small mammals also. But when an animal is injured, you have to take it to a licensed rehabilitator to try and have it recover. And Piska Penny was hit by a car. I've had a number of people question why we have this white squirrel. She was hit by a car. She has basically injuries that do not allow her to be released back into the wild. So the only way she can survive is she lives at a rehabilitation center with the certified rehabilitator, and then she fulfills her duty and responsibility to the city as our ambassador. So a big thank you to Piska Penny, who on Friday did an incredible job for a little squirrel with 60 people. I'm sure it was terrifying, but she did good. We also have another one of our initiatives that, two weeks ago, we held our first age exchange forum. You might remember, I talked about this. This is an initiative to try and sort of break down some of those silos that exist. It's sort of in line with what the meeting that a number of us were just at in terms of creating more unity. And this is to bring people of different generations together to talk about a particular subject. And so our first one was held, two weeks ago, we had over 90 people attend. We had estimated 30 to 35. So we had quite a large group be there. We had people from age 11 to 94, so you can see the wide range of generations. And we're going to continue to do this. The idea is to create social environments and activities where people can meet people that are outside of your normal sphere. You know, most of our friends are our same-age group. So our next one is coming up on February 17, from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Porter Center. And this time, we're going to talk about nature. We're going to talk about how different generations view the environment, and how that environment and that viewpoint really impacts their lives. And so it's going to be, we've got four different speakers. Each one represents a different generation. So it's free, it's at the Porter Center, and I encourage you to come and join us in this initiative where we are really trying to get this intergenerational communication more common in our community. So join me on the 17th. Then, let's see. Finally, oh, finally, we have our February Meet the Mayor, where you are invited to come join me on February 22, from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Mary C. Jenkins Community Center. You can bring a sandwich, you don't have to bring your lunch, you can, you can come and eat. It's very informal, and we will talk about whatever you want to talk about regarding our city. It's just another way to make sure that you have access to your elected officials and to get the latest information directly with accurate facts, and you don't have to rely on reading Facebook to see what's going on with all those facts. You'll get the real truth. So join me at Meet the Mayor, February 22. And I think with that, we are ready to move into our closed session. Do I have a motion to?
Go into closed session for potential litigation, Madam Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now going into closed session.